Check one-two, check one-two. Check mic one. Check mic two. Check mic three. Check mic four. Check mic five. Check mic six. Check mic seven. Check wireless, check wireless. Check mic eight. Check mic nine. Check mic ten. Check mic eleven. Check mic twelve. Check wireless two.
Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Okay, unanimous consent to be accepted? Alright, we'll move on to number three, committee reports. There, this week or this month, we did not have a finance committee, a curriculum committee, or an extracurricular activities committee meeting. We did however, have a personnel and policy meeting. Madley?
Okay, so, this evening, we reviewed six existing policies that are noted down as first reads. We're gonna recommend that we move some of these to second read this evening. The policies that we're recommending we move to second read this evening are 340, responsibility for student welfare, 341, benefits for part-time employees, 342, jury duty, and 343, paid holidays. For three of those, we have no changes at all, which is why we're recommending that we move them forward tonight. For the jury duty policy, we recommend moving it to second read tonight, but we would like to make a change that we just think would make the process smoother. There's language in the jury duty policy right now that talks about crediting back any compensation received during jury duty. It's usually having to be paid in cash, and it's about eight dollars, you know, a handful of times a year. It seems like a really unnecessary bureaucratic sort of function, and we spoke with Jenny just to make sure there's not a reason for that, or if that would impact any process. She actually says it would probably be well-received, because right now, employees have to sort of come and give cash over for whatever those outstanding expenses are. It's really small amounts of money. So, with that one change, which I can give to Christine, we just recommend moving that one to second read as well. There are two policies that we did go over tonight that are first reads, that we are having HR look at a little bit further. One is on workers' compensation. We just wanna make sure again, that that's aligned with our current best practice, and so we've asked Jenny to take a look at that before the next meeting, in case there's any other updates. And the second's around procurement cards. There's some updates that we need to make. It's a, an update from PS, PS?
P S.
V A, yeah, sorry. And so, we'll leave that as first read as well. Otherwise, we recommend those other four, with that one change on the jury duty policy, be moved forward. I'm happy to, you know, share any other information if you have it. Questions?
Alright. Next would be superintendent's items and reports. Mr., Dr. Stage, any report?
I have nothing to report this month. Thank you.
Okay. Northern Tier Career Center, Mrs. Cooper?
I do not have anything. Our next meeting is next Thursday, so my last report updated everything thus far.
Thank you. P S B A, just that we will be voting tonight on the delegates for the, what is it? Oh, the leadership positions that are up for election, we'll be voting on that later. And I don't have anything else to report on that. Section five on the agenda, solicitors' items and reports. Mr. Barrett?
The, finally, we were able to resolve that Catworks Assessment Appeal, and I got an order, matter of fact, it came in the mail today from Judge Byrne, approving our settlement and my forward to the business manager. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to section six of the agenda, visitors' comments. Are there any visitor comments tonight? I'm not gonna read this if there's no visitor comments. Anyone? Alright, moving on, number seven, financial business. Can I have a motion in a second to bring financial business?
So moved.
A second.
Alright, so we have listing of the bills, general fund checks, cafeteria bills, and the Berkheimer Earned Income Tax Report. Any questions from the board, or discussion?
I have one thing. We always get a listing of the bills, the first page, and it has broken down how much for each, like the bonds, the payroll, taxes, cafeteria bills. Could we please add a charter school line there, so that each month, we could see how much is actually going out to charter schools, and then it would also be listed on the website as well, correct?
I have a feel. Okay, if there are no questions, or comments, or discussion, we'll go ahead with the vote to, for the financial business. Christine?
Mrs. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Charisnowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, personnel items. So, we have a rather lengthy personnel list this evening. Can I have a motion to bring this to the table in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
So again, we have a rather lengthy list. We have professional contracts, we have support contracts, and we have quite a few supplemental contracts. And again, these supplemental contracts that are listed here, these are for our clubs, our extracurricular clubs and activities. Is that correct, Dr. Stage?
Yeah, yes, it's also, you know, like our WOLA teachers, and some other supplemental positions that are basically with stipends, and this covers for the majority of the academic year.
Then there's a athletic coach resignation, and then there's athletic volunteers. Questions, discussion?
That's the shame is our coach, swimming coach.
Yep.
Do we have interviews?
We just advertised, beginning of this week, or last week, and so we'll keep that open for ten days, and then we'll set up interviews.
I'm excited to see the guidance counselor position filled.
Yes, me too.
Alright, if there's no questions or further discussion? Are we voting on all of these at once?
If you'd like to poll, I'm trying to find it right now, I'm sorry, my computer's slow. If you could poll C, please?
Sure. Okay, so we will be voting on A, B, D, and E. Christine?
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Charisnowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mrs. Minnick?
Yes. And now, we will vote on section C, the supplemental contracts. Christine?
Mr. Charisnowski?
Upstaying.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Minnick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
So, just before we move on to the next thing, we have some people here tonight. We have Becky Ike. Becky, will you stand up? We hired Becky already, but she hasn't started yet, so she'll be starting?
Thursday.
Thursday. We have Holly Stevens with us. Holly, we've already hired Holly, she's a school counselor at the middle school, and she started on September 3rd, so welcome. And then we have Brittany Myers, who we did just hire tonight, as elementary school counselor. So, welcome, everyone, thank you. I think that's everybody. So, good.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to the Wildcat family. Alright, we will now move on to section nine, contracts and agreements. Can I have a motion in a second to bring this to the table?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, so under contracts and agreements, we have the Children's House Child Advocacy Center Agreement, the Foster Grandparent MOU with Lynch-Boston, Northern Tier Regional Planning and Development Commission MOU, and the Red Rock Job Corps Partnership Agreement. Questions, or discussion? I do. The Foster Grandparent MOU with Lynch-Boston, is that on a different schedule than the Foster Grandparent with SRU?
No, it's the same thing. We just, we've had an agreement with the agency, area agency on aging with SRU. We just had to add, this is just an addition to include Lynch-Boston now. We haven't had them in there, in there for a while, so they just wanted an updated agreement, so.
This one has both in it? I didn't see SRU in this one.
No, we don't have to do one for SRU, because we've already had one. We haven't done this for a while, and now they wanted to do this for Lynch, so.
When is the one with SRU up?
I don't know, typically just ongoing, but.
Okay, 'cause this one says three years.
Yeah, I'll have to think, we'll have to look back into the books, and see when the last time we did that, so.
'Cause maybe next time, we can combine both of them.
Yeah, it's the same agency, yeah. That would be simple to combine them, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, Christine, when you're ready?
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
And Mr. Charisnowski?
Yes.
Okay, so next up is policies. And, we're moving two, right, to second read?
Yes.
We're moving four.
Four.
Yes, the last two on the list, N and O, we're leaving, we're recommending that we leave at first read.
Okay.
The rest, we recommend.
So. To second read?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the harassment affecting students, discrimination, we have non-discrimination, we have pregnant parenting married students, we have a policy on hazing, bully cybering, cyberbullying, educator misconduct, personal, the custody leave, excuse me, uncompensated leave, responsibility for student welfare, and benefits for part-time employees, the jury duty, and paid holidays will all be second read. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on discussion on those? And then, workman's comp and procurement will be carried over for second read next month. Anyone? Christine, when you're ready?
Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Charisnowski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to number 11, curriculum and instruction items. We have, can I have a motion in a second to bring this to the table?
So moved.
Second.
Under this, we have the Athens Area School District School Counseling 339 Plan for twenty-four, for the year 2425.
Just a quick explanation, the chapter 339, K-12 Comprehensive Counseling Plan is, outlines, based upon school code, how we address career readiness through our school counseling and our career coaches. This has to be approved for the school year, as it also is our year for a cyclical monitoring of our ag program, so this is part one of that. And so, we had to get this on the agenda and approved, so. And you can look at it, you can see, you know, every grade level, there's goals, benchmarks, evidence collection for career planning and career readiness, so.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Alright, Christine, when you're ready?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Charisnowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
And Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Alright, next is transportation items. Motion in a second to bring this to the table?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, under transportation items, we have the transportation contracts for school year 2425, we have a bus upgrade request, and we have additional driver list. Questions and discussion on any of these items? I do. Jenny, does, do these contracts have anything with the additional gas over three dollars, or additional diesel over three dollars? So, this contract, these contracts then aren't, they don't have the total cost, then these are just, this is just what they're responsible for, and what we're responsible for? I just, I just have a question. So, the contracts that we're looking at tonight, and voting on tonight, there's no cost, there's no money involved. Like, is this just what they're responsible for, and what we're responsible for?
Correct. Linda will have a spreadsheet, next meeting for you, to show, broken down by each route, how much we're paying.
And then we vote on that then, too, or, I mean, we're voting on a contract that there's no cost, like?
Yep, this is just so we have a contract in place, so that they will transport our students.
But shouldn't a contract have costs in it? I'm just curious, like?
I understand your saying.
How, we're voting on a contract, but we don't know how much the contract's gonna cost us. Have we done that in the past?
So, I think that the goal was to make sure that we have a binding agreement that they will transport our students. And then, the cost was based upon a formula that the state provides, and I don't know if the transportation coordinator, either got those actual costs. But whether those costs fluctuate or not, the more important thing is that we have them under contract to actually run our routes. The costs are gonna be out of our control, based upon our formula, you know, mileage and whatnot. We'll have that information for you guys in the October board meeting. We'll have that information for you guys in the October board meeting. I know that our department tried to get those numbers to you, but we're just not finalized on our full ridership yet, because it's still early in the school year. It goes by a number of students, it goes by mileage, so routes are even changing as we speak, and so I know Linda was trying to calculate those, and. Thank you.
I think this, if you look this over well, it is, I think it is a binding agreement, it's just a big, for safe pupil transportation, it's just to make sure the kids are transported day-to-day, there's insurance put on the vehicles.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's not contractually onto the money side, but it's to basically make sure that our kids aren't being transferred back and forth.
Yeah. So it's a standard contract that we've used in the past. It's just, I think the rates have not been adjusted yet.
I don't think you can get initial rates until you have full disclosure of the students on the buses either. So that's gonna take up to a month or so anyways, to make sure that you have the student population put on.
Thank you. We did, we did, but the conversation from the board was they'd like to see it sooner, and we did the best we could.
So she did what she could to get, get you what she could, so that we're covered, so that we have a contract with them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right, transportation items then, Christine, when you're ready?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Chersnowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, section 13, building and grounds, there's nothing at this time. Section 14, other, is the health and safety plan for 2425 and the PSBA office election ballot. Can I have a motion in a second to bring this to the table?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. or Dr. Stage, can you review the?
Call me whatever you want.
The health and safety plan, this is the last time, right?
Uh, so by federal rule, the health and sa, by the state rule and federal rule, this health and safety plan becomes null and void on, on the last day of September of 2024. However, it had to be reviewed every six months, which makes it this board meeting. I don't recommend any changes, edits, or revisions to this. The question that some people may say, Craig, are you still dealing with COVID periodically and intermittently?
Okay. Questions or discussion? We are go, can we put them all together? The PSBA election ballot, okay, so that is, oh, that's boarding, yeah. Stuck together, okay. So we'll also be voting on the leadership positions that are up for election for PSBA, which are listed, there's, there's one for each district, yeah. All right, go ahead, Christine, when you're ready?
Mrs. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Chersnowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to visitor comments. Any visitor comments? All right, we'll move on to board communications, if you look, there's the personnel transfers, which there's none at this time, a Sunday facility use through October, and FFA calendar of events through the end of the school year. They will be having overnight trips that we'll have to vote on monthly, when the trips are in that, in that month.
Correct, and, and the FFA and agricultural education teachers took the time to highlight those dates in there, so you could readily see those.
I do appreciate them getting everything in one year printed out.
Yes.
Working ahead. Oh, and the field trips are also here. Any questions or discussion? All right, that brings us to the future meetings, we'll be having a regular session meeting on Tuesday, October 8th, at 7 o'clock, this will be at the SRU Elementary School in East Smithfield. Committees will meet at 6:15. Do we have a need for? Okay, we will be having an executive session after this for personnel. No decisions or voting will be taken place. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.